To order, could I have a roll call?
John Hudson, Steve Caswell.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Bob Wilbar.
And if everyone would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me know if you didn't get it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have several upcoming meeting dates, May 5th and May 19th. Pam, is all right, I'm going to hold the approval of minutes over to the next meeting. And so the first item on our agenda tonight is an extension of final approval for Saxon Woods.
Good evening.
Hello.
We're back again. We are still working with Central Hudson. There's been some issues back and forth between the owner and Central Hudson on what they want for the license agreement.
Okay.
So it's getting close.
This is to get the driveway through their Eastman?
Correct.
How close are you?
From what I understand, both sides are looking at what they think is the final draft at this point.
Okay. And then Tom, I'm assuming that has to come to the town for review and all that?
Yeah. But it's usually a pretty much standard Central Hudson agreement, so I'll take mine.
Okay. So how long of an extension are you requesting?
You know, as long as I can get at this point because of just from the history of how long it has taken. I hope to be back sooner with the maps. They're 100% complete, the maps themselves.
No other conditions outstanding?
No.
Drainage district?
Yep, we're all set. We have final sign-offs except for the Central Hudson agreement.
Okay. All right.
Matter of fact, I have Milo sitting in my office.
Okay.
A year?
Yeah. Brandon or Michelle, anything that we need to talk about with this one? And I know Joe had sent an email. He wasn't, he's not here this evening, but he said there were no issues with this one. Scott, any?
I just had a question. I know there was a overhead utility line.
Yep.
That was to be raised. Have you made any progress just going ahead and getting that done, or?
No, the owner doesn't want to do any work until the maps are filed and ready to go. And obviously, that is a condition that has to be done before any work is being done. So at this point, the answer is no.
Okay.
But we know that it's the first thing that needs to be done.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? So Bob, are you going to make a motion for a one-year?
Sure.
Extension?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Donovan 5 VMAC LLC, formerly known as 376 Business Park on Nancy Court. This is another extension of final approval request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse my garb tonight, I just walked off a softball field and-
Quite all right.
-wearing a button T-shirt, so this is what you get tonight. This is, I think most of the board members may be familiar with this. This is a site plan at the end of Nancy Court of 376. And effectively, there's an existing building that's on it. We had gotten approval, actually approval 10, 12 years ago for site plan, lapsed, came back in, got approval for another building, signed, sealed, and delivered. The approval was granted by this board on April 12, 2013, about a year ago. Plus or minus, we came to this board and asked for an extension of the site plan approval, and you were gracious enough to provide that. We actually, I think at the point, may have even asked for a two-year extension, but the kind of was like, we'll give you the year, and then why don't you come back in a year and see where things are at if you don't get going. So that's why we're back here now. As mentioned in a letter that Alarangold, the owner, provided to board, he is, takes a portion of the existing building, and then he has a tenant space that takes the balance of the other building. The tenant in the other building is going to be leaving, so even less of a reason to build the other building at this particular given time. So what he's respectfully requesting tonight is a further extension of his approval for a year.
Mike, this is the one that was supposed to have the shared parking agreement or something?
Right.
Okay.
And that was all part of it, and taking care was part of the process.
Okay. So what is left of the conditions?
We have a, I believe, we have a signed site plan.
Okay.
There's no, this is-
So it's just an extension?
What happens is, you have to get, you have to obtain a building permit within a particular period of time once the site plan is signed.
Correct.
Right?
Okay.
So we didn't get a building permit for sure, and we don't plan on getting a building permit anytime soon. So it's a little different than getting everything taken care of and not getting a signature.
Okay. So Tom, is this then a planning board action, or is this a building department action?
No, what happened is he didn't get the building permit yet.
Right.
Okay.
So they're asking for site plan to be continued for an additional year, which during that year, he can get the site building permit, which would give him another year to build if, if economic conditions warrant. I'm sure it's probably going to go another year after that, where things are right now, especially with his tenant moving up.
So I just had a note that, do we have the shared parking agreement then?
Yes.
Okay, I had that note from the-
And it was an access agreement.
Right, with the neighbor.
Okay, all right. All right. Brandon or Michelle, anything we need to go over on this one? And again, we had Joe's notes that said he didn't have any questions. Scott, anything?
No.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members?
Can we grant them a two-year extension?
One year at a time.
One year at a time, okay.
But to Tom's point, it sounds like if we do the one year and they pull the building permit within that year, they have another year to start the construction, so it's-
Just, I know what economic times are like out there.
It's getting better.
It's getting better, but it's not good yet.
But we're not there yet.
But we'd rather have you check in with us, too.
What's that?
We'd rather have you check in with us, too.
Well, I think what it is, it's kind of a checks and balances.
Right.
It doesn't take a whole lot to come here and kind of explain where things are at. I mean, once we obtain that building permit, then all the timeframes change, and now it's to the building department.
Okay.
I have a lot of friends in the trades, and it's not that good yet.
So do I have a motion for a one-year extension of the Donovan 5 VMAC LLC approval?
So, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a referral from the Town Board for rezoning recommendation for Vig at 1092 Route 8, sorry, 1090 Route 82. And this is, Michelle, I think we have in our package tonight a picture of the zoning map. And this is, this is a, it's a parcel where several of the parcels that border Route 82 are all in the B1 zone. The parcels to the rear of this, the parcel to the rear of this is in a R1 zone, but if you, it seems like if you drew the B1 line, kind of this parcel would be within the B1 zone. Am I saying that correctly? I think it's pretty much adjacent, like pretty much every lot line adjacent to it. On three sides adjacent to B1, but the rear, okay.
Our picture was clearly taken at night.
Absolutely, at night, absolutely.
But Michelle, we confirm the zoning in all the parcels around it, and I think there was one other, I think one other parcel, if you have the map in front of you, this parcel is residential, this is the subject parcel, but everything from here forward except for these two are B1. So it's this one and this one are R1, but this is the line, and everything this way is B1.
So this was a mistake. Should we have been included, or?
Oh yeah, I've seen this, yeah. So I guess the applicant is requesting a rezone of, and I don't even believe there's any access currently to that parcel except through, so it's landlocked as well. Okay. Is there common ownership to any of the other parcels, or is it truly landlocked?
No, just, they own only these two. The others, they're owned by other people as well.
Okay. So what happens with a landlocked parcel with no common contiguous ownership? Well, I mean, they wouldn't be really, they have no access out to any of the roadway, so they wouldn't be able to- Okay.
No, but it's common ownership to the lot in front of them.
Right. But, yeah, on its own. Oh, I thought you said there was no common ownership.
For zoning, it's two lots, but ownership is one owner.
I got it. Okay.
The zoning line goes through to the front lot.
Okay.
What was the nature of the request? I mean, are they just looking to make, see if we have an issue with it, or are they?
Under the zoning ordinance, he's made an application to the Town Board to have the Town Board rezon property, and under the law, it has to be referred to you if you have comments.
Okay.
So you make a comment, or no comment, whatever, but you have 30 days within which to do so, and then the Town Board takes that into consideration in deciding whether it's going to go forward. I assume it's, would you like to expand sometime in the future?
Yes.
Yes. Initially, when you bought the property, they were both zoned commercial, and we worked them as commercial pieces of land. But now, since January this year, the town somehow found out that they were supposed, the rear lot was supposed to be residential, not commercial. So they rezoned it back to residential. So what we are requesting is putting it back as commercial, both of them, the way it was initially.
That's the note I got sent.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
I think it's good then.
Okay. And Michelle or Brendan, anything further we should discuss? I don't have any comment for the Town Board. I don't know if anybody on the planning board does, other than it seems like a reasonable thing based on what the maps look like right now.
It's reasonable, no objections.
Exactly, because we've been paying taxes as commercial lots for both of them all these years. They're supposed to be commercial, and now all of a sudden, the town has reverted them to, one of them is residential.
Okay.
So that's what we are requesting, just put them back as they were as commercial.
So it's a Town Board action that they would be the ones to actually do the rezoning, I believe?
Exactly, yeah.
So you're in front of the planning board just for us to, if we had questions about it or anything like that, and I think the planning board, based on what I'm hearing at the table here, we're comfortable with this, and will pass those comments along to the Town Board, and then it'll be scheduled for a Town Board action.
Great, great. Thank you so much.
For the record, I think it's a great idea.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Pam, if we need to draft something up, I can work with you if that's all right with the board. We'll just work on a response back to the Town Board that we had no questions or suggestions. Okay? Great. So the next item, the last item on our agenda tonight, actually, is a public hearing for the Muse, 89 units on Route 376. Pam, before we open the public hearing, can I just confirm, do we have everything we need to be able to open the public hearing? Advertisements, all of our green cards? Okay. Okay. So Jeff, do we have the map to put up on the screen as well?
Yes.
Great, okay. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing for the Muse?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we'll get started in just a moment, folks.
Should we spin that so the public can see?
Yeah, so we're also going to have it up on the board in a moment.
I'd be okay with that, I mean, you-
Yeah, it's fine. And Jeff, the elevations, have they been approved by the ARB?
I'll tie it to that.
Okay.
I've been the ARB one. We have a picture of nine, and we are pushing for them, and then we'll go back again.
So our public hearing is, also the ARB's public hearing, so we'll need to adjourn you past when you'll next be at the ARB, so that you'll be able to finish the review of your buildings and have the actual drawings that are approved by the ARB on display for the public.
Understood.
Okay. All right. We're ready to go, Jeff, if you guys are ready to go. We've opened the public hearings, so.
Go on yours, half the floor.
And maybe what I'll do, Tom, is if I could just have you kind of give us a quick update. I know this is the first time we're seeing this as it's coming back in its new form and in a new location, and then we'll gain an overview of the project from you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. This development before us tonight has morphed in various forms and from various locations to the current proposal. As the board's well aware, there were two prior applicants involved with this development at a different location on Joe's Mother's Road, and the board saw various versions of that over the last few years. I think it started back in 2011. Sometime last year, this applicant, Carney Development, became involved and introduced the proposal again at Joe's Mother's Road. It went through extensive review, many public hearings, and in the fall, I believe it was September, the Town Board conducted several public hearings. And at that point in time, because of the issues presented by the site at Joe's Mother's Road, the Town Board denied a special permit. Many of the speakers during the Town Board's public hearings indicated their support for development of this type, however, they said the location just didn't work. And two of the speakers even recommended that the town consider part of the parcel that the town owns across the street from Town Hall here on Route 376. With all of that said, following the Town Board's denial, there was a litigation filed. There were extensive discussions between the Town Board and the parties to the litigation, and a stipulation of settlement was agreed to by the Town Board in November, wherein the town entered into a contract to sell approximately 20 acres of the parcel across the street as a new location for this development. And the applicant has been before the planning board the last few months in the discussion phase, and the development has been evolving into what we see before us this evening. About eight weeks ago, the planning board adopted a resolution indicating the planning board's intent to become the lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And what that is, is before any municipal board can take any action with respect to any application before it, it must comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, commonly known as SEQA. And what SEQA requires is that a list of any possible perceived impacts of a development be listed, and that the board review those impacts and how, and to what extent they can be mitigated. And as part of that process, the public hearing obviously serves the purpose of making sure all of the issues have been properly identified. But early on, about eight weeks ago, the planning board also identified two groups of agencies. One group is interested parties, which are other agencies which actually have to give approval of some sort if the project were to go forward. Examples of that would be the New York State Department of Transportation, because the entrance is proposed onto a state highway; the New York State DEC, because there are wetlands on the site; and also any historic issues that might exist; the DUCUS County Department of Health for any sewer and water. So all of those agencies are notified, they're given a complete set of the application, the plan that you see before you is also sent to them, and they have the right throughout this process to render comments. Many of them have already commented. Another group on the list are interested agencies. These are other entities which play no role in approving, but may be impacted by the development. So on that list, two examples would be the emergency services of the town are notified, the Board of Fire Commissioners, and also the school board is notified with respect to any issues that they may have. And those agencies, amongst others, are also provided with all the information and asked to comment and give guidance to the board with respect to any perceived impacts they see and any issues they might raise. So with all of that, we're now here tonight, it's been advertised for a public hearing. The comments this evening would be considered by the planning board, both with respect to the identification of any environmental issues, any concerns, as well as site-specific to the layout of the development. So from our point of view procedurally, that's how we're here tonight.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman G., members of the board. My name is Ken Carney, I'm the president of the Carney Realty Group. I'm here this evening with Sean Carney from the Carney Group, our partners, Abilities First, represented by Executive Director Jeff Fox and Elton Griffin. Our site engineers, Inside Engineering, tonight with us is Principal Jeff Contamo and Eric Schlobum, and A.J. Coppola from Coppola Associates is the project architect. The Muse at Hopewell Junction is 88 units, combination of workforce, supportive housing. In addition, there's another unit, non-rent bearing for superintendents. In addition to developing, we also construct our own projects, and most importantly, we manage our own project. And the non-rent bearing supers unit is a critical component of our ongoing management plan. The project is broken down this way. There are four rows of townhomes that consist of 36 townhomes. It's 14 three bedrooms and 22 two bedrooms. I've used this in the past. The townhomes replicate home ownership. From a management standpoint, it works. It works well. In addition, we have two other multifamily buildings. We have Building 1, which consists of 31 one-bedroom units. In addition to the 31 one-bedrooms, there will also be a office for our partners, Abilities First, who will do onsite case management and interact with their, with the special needs tenant, the special needs population, the developmentally disabled. Building 2 consists of 22 units, which includes five one-bedroom apartments and 17 two-bedrooms. The Building 1, the one-bedrooms, we kept the rents reasonable. We will target seniors and target the developmentally disabled. The rents will range from $515 to $670 per month. The townhomes, the 20 of the two-bedroom townhomes will rent for $980 a month and will be available to families with an income up to $52,020. 12 of the three-bedroom units will rent for $1125 a month and are available to families with an income up to $56,200. The remaining two two-bedroom units will be rented for $1245 and will have income limits up to 80% of AMI, which is approximately $70,000. The two remaining three-bedroom townhomes will rent for $1395 and available to families with an income up to approximately $75,000. When I was talking about income limits maybe four or five months ago, they were different. The new income limits came out, they did go up approximately 4% to 5%, and by the time this community is built, they'll probably go up two more times. It was a nice, the area median income did increase, and as that increases, the bracket or the income range also increases.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, we construct our own developments, but more importantly, we manage our own developments. In addition to Abilities First having an office in Building 1 and Building 2, we will have a community building. And what we do is, we use it for activities for the entire community, and we also have onsite laundry, mail, et cetera. But most important, we have our onsite management office there. The management office, the person working there works for me, they will be there five days a week, and in addition to the superintendent, who is there 24/7, that is our eyes and ears. We manage all of our own properties. We do thorough background checks on all tenants, credit, criminal history, prior landlord, and personal interviews. Either myself or my son Sean will personally be involved in the interviews. I've been doing that for the last 25 years, and like I said, we've gained a reputation for hands-on management style. So long, for development to work long-term, that is as critical a component as the exterior siding and what roof shingles we use. So the development is funded by three major sources. One is tax credits. Tax credits are allocated to each state in the country based on population. We are seeking an allocation of tax credits, which are then syndicated to a limited partner, who, they stay in the deal for 15 years. At the end of 15 years, they exit, and the Carneys buy out their share. In addition, the Office for Persons with Developmental Disabilities, acronym OPWDD, has committed approximately $2.7 million in capital funds toward the development for the 22 units. In addition, they've committed operating costs for Abilities First to come down and actually provide services to the tenants onsite. And then we have private financing. There's banks that we have worked with for, like I said, 25 years, and that is our third source of funding. The Carneys will be in this long-term. We don't flip, we don't sell, we just work in it long-term. I've been doing this for over 25 years. I've been doing tax credit developments for about 17 years now, and a few of the first ones that we started with, 17, 16, 15 years, are coming up on their 15 years, and we've recently completed our first buyout of the limited partner. So we are committed to it, and we will be here long-term. So at this juncture, I'm going to introduce our partner, Jeff Fox from Abilities First. He'll say a few words, and then Jeff Contamo from Inside Engineering can run through the site itself, and then A.J. Coppola from Coppola Associates can talk about the architecture.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, nice to see you all again. I'll keep it brief. I'm Jeff Fox from Abilities First. We are, as you know, we are providers of services for children and adults with developmental disabilities and other kinds of developmental challenges throughout the DUCUS County and surrounding counties in the mid-Hudson region. Our interest in this partnership and in this development is in the integration of people with, adults with disabilities with the rest of the community. For, throughout, you know, the last 30 or 40 years, adults with developmental disabilities have opportunities to live in group homes, and there's many of them around the state and around the country. Problem with group homes is that they are not integrated with the community. They are still segregated, they're congregate care facilities, they're highly regulated. People who live in those settings, not only do they not have many opportunities to interact with non-disabled peers, but they have lots of rules and regulations that come along with being a congregate care facility. This development would be uncertified, even though, as Ken said, OPWDD has committed quite a bit of money in capital funds, so they would be funding part of the construction. It's not going to be certified or regulated by OPWDD. So the folks that will live here will experience an unprecedented level of freedom in this industry. And they will also, we will, our job in this, in this setting will be to help facilitate relationships with neighbors and the rest of the community, so there's harmony. The folks that will live here will be people who are working at some level. They will be people who are able to use public transportation, probably will not have their own vehicles, probably won't be taking up any parking space. But they're all people who we know in our agency and have gotten to know and have great relationships with, and we know they'd be great members of this community. The arrangement is for 25% of the units to be for folks getting our services, so that's 22 units. 18 of those units would be one-bedroom, and four of those units would be two-bedroom, so for a total of 26 individuals getting supports from us would be living in this site. Also, we will have some social work service coordination onsite, staffing to kind of facilitate any immediate needs that people have, and everybody living in this setting would have their own services, kind of service model wrapped around them. So if they need help budgeting finances, or grocery shopping, or taking medications, things like that, a staff member paid separately by Abilities First would be there however long they're needed, a couple hours a week, up to 10, 15 hours a week perhaps, depending on each individual's needs. So I'm here for the rest of the evening to answer any questions that you have, so thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Contamo from Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture, PC, here with Eric Schlobum. What we have up on the screen now is our rendered site plan. As Ken explained, the site plan is made up of a mixture of townhomes, which are these four clusters to the rear of the site, and then the multifamily buildings toward the front of the site. The site is located pretty much across the street. We're here in Town Hall. This is the fire station, the wastewater treatment plant driveway, and the plant actually sits right down in here. We've rendered the site plan over an aerial, and what we've shown is there is a substantial canopy of trees which surrounds-
and what we've shown is there is a substantial canopy of trees which surrounds the development. What we have in the lighter green are the areas where we'll be grading and installing lawn and/or landscaping. The site is going to be accessed by a single driveway initially. We've had some discussions with the DOT relative to options for that driveway, and we believe we've got several options, all of which will gain access from Route 376 into the site, and all of which will work for us as far as providing adequate access and grades and site distances. The site itself is configured of a loop with a central green area. We worked with the planning board by land banking some of our parking in order to achieve a broader and more useful green area. We're required to have a hundred and seventy-eight spaces. We've land banked thirty-seven of those, which if my math is right, leaves a hundred and forty-one for use of our occupants and visitors. Based on Ken's experience, we believe that's really more than we need, so we're confident we have ample parking. Our sewer and water connections will be to municipal district and/or service areas. Sewer will come through the site and back to the pump station, which is in the rear of the adjacent portion of the Cannon property. Our water connection will come off a waterline which runs behind Town Hall about the fire station, and will come across and feed the facility through there. Stormwater-wise, we're going to be providing several infiltration areas, which will meet the latest state standards as far as stormwater goes. We'll also be using a depression, which right now sits on the property right here, which will allow us to capture the runoff and attenuate any peak flows. Landscaping-wise, we've taken a look at site visibility from Route 376. We've provided some cross-sections. As you can see, there is ample tree canopy along the front edge, except for we're clearing in order to cut in our driveway. The cross-sections show that, except for this very small portion on 376, we will be blocked by those trees. What we've done is, as you come up into the site, we've provided kind of a line of evergreens, which will screen the buildings from any direct and clear view. We've also provided some additional screening toward the rear adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant driveway. There is an existing evergreen row here. We've got our playfield back there in an area that's already been cleared, and we're going to be revegetating some of these perimeter areas. As you can see, they're sparsely vegetated based on installation of the force main that came through the site. We are going to need a DEC wetland permit. There's a floodplain and wetland line that sits at the bottom of the slope. Some of our stormwater discharges and residual grading come into the hundred-foot buffer, which will require us to get a permit. We are not disturbing any of the wetland, only in the one-hundred-foot buffer area, in very small areas. With that, I'm going to let A.J. speak a bit about the buildings.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening. A.J. Coppola. I'm the project architect. So, as has already been mentioned, we have six buildings, basically divided into two different types of building types. We have townhouse buildings, which under the New York State Building Code, townhouses are basically treated identical to single-family homes. And we have two multifamily buildings. So, of the two multifamily buildings, as Ken mentioned, there's the thirty-unit, one-bedroom building, and that building would be a center-loaded corridor with a center elevator. And then the other multifamily building would be set up as a garden-style apartment, where we would provide exterior entrances, and they would basically be some, half of the units at grade, and then half of the units, you'd walk up a floor to get to the second-floor units. So, all of the six buildings are two stories. All of the six buildings, for construction-wise, will be wood frame, so it's basic residential construction. There are two important green and sustainable initiatives that we are going to be completing as part of this project that I think are significant, and I'm going to mention them quickly. The first is, this, this entire project will be part of the NYSERDA Multiple Family Performance Program. And NYSERDA is the New York State Agency that promotes energy efficiency through reduction in elec, in electricity. So, this, the, all the individual utilities contribute to NYSERDA, and then NYSERDA basically runs these programs to encourage these efficiencies. So, the NYSERDA program typically deals with efficiencies in, in the equipment that we, that we burn, the heat that we produce, and also the insulation and the air sealing of these apartments. So, every apartment in this development, all eighty-eight apartments, we will air seal individually. We will be doing a blower door test individually on each apartment. So, that, that basically, you know, wraps the envelope of each apartment individually, whether it's a townhouse, or whether it's located in the, in the multiple-family buildings, and, and completely seals that up in terms of infiltration and heat loss, and makes a significant difference in, when these tenants eventually will be occupying the unit and the level of comfort and the significant, how efficient these units will be in terms of heating. So, that's the NYSERDA program that we will be doing. The second program is LEED for homes. LEED is basically run by the USGBC, the United States Green Building Council. LEED is a, it's a world, it's, it's probably the top green rating system in the United States, and LEED is recognized worldwide in terms of a green rating system. So, this project will be, LEED is separated into different types of programs. This is LEED for homes, and under LEED for homes, this project will be certif, certified certification. So, LEED has four levels of certification, platinum, gold, silver, and certified. This will be a certified LEED for homes, LEED for homes project. So, what does that mean? In addition to everything we're doing on the NYSERDA side, LEED is a much broader-based sustainability and green program. LEED will, will get, look at things like, water use is extremely important in water efficiency. We'll look at things like construction waste management, so that we are recycling our construction waste. And we'll look at things like recycled materials, durable materials, and a host of all other things that range from the landscaping to everything that we put into this building. So, under those two separate programs, you're really getting a level of construction that's significantly better than average, and probably some of the best buildings, I think, in the entire county. These will be some of the best construction in the entire county. So, that's it basically for the construction. I just wanted to give you an update too on where we are with your Architectural Review Board. I was at the Architectural Review Board meeting two weeks ago, in the first week of April, and basically, we presented these two renderings. One rendering is of the townhouse unit, and one rendering is, is of one of the multiple-family units. And basically, just to talk about the exterior materials real quick, we are basically using all durable materials. This is not vinyl siding. This is concrete plank siding, and it's something that the carneys have used on all of their projects, which promotes a really, really nice finish on the exterior. And basically, what we're doing is, we'll be using a concrete plank siding material and a concrete plank shingle material. And the scheme will basically be to use a two-tone color pattern and reverse those two color patterns between, we use one color pattern for the townhouse buildings, and then another color pattern for the two multiple-family buildings. So, I was at the ARB meeting. We presented this. I have a short list of about half a dozen items, as per their comments, that I'm, feel confident that we can address, and we're going to be making a submission to them at, the first week in May, and I'll be going back to them the first week in May.
So, you said you, you shared with them two of the six buildings. Is that...
The, the renderings that are up, up here are the same renderings that we made for our submission.
Okay. So, are there any architectural differences between, with the other four buildings? I just want to make sure the ARB sees everything they should be seeing.
We gave the ARB all of the elevations, so...
For all six buildings?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The black and white ones.
Good. Okay.
Yes.
And you're scheduled to be back in front of the ARB?
It's the first, what is it, the first, third, I can forget what the meeting date is, first Monday or first Thursday?
In May.
First Thursday. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just to mention, because, because the ARB public hearing is also our public hearing, we can't close this public hearing until you're done with the ARB, and they've, so any changes you're making to the renderings, you'll need to come back and present to the public for us.
Sure.
Okay. Jeff, if you want to come up just for a minute, I've got a few, just a few questions on the, the layout. And I think there was, and Brendan, maybe we can just talk a little bit about the entranceway. And Jeff, I know you mentioned there was a couple different options for the driveway that you talked through with the DOT. So, can you just kind of walk us through what this plan shows, and if you have any of the alternate drawings of the other possible entrances?
Sure.
Just so we understand that.
Yeah. We haven't changed this entrance from our last meeting with the board, although we've had the discussions. What we have done, based on the board's comments, was extend the sidewalk along our entrance to a bus shelter at the intersection. And one of the key components, I think, that everyone's interested in, is getting pedestrian connection from our, our, our community into the town complex. So, one of the issues that was discussed with, with the DOT, and I'll let Brendan maybe summarize that meeting, because I wasn't there, Eric and Brendan were, was the idea of a crosswalk versus just an unmarked ability to cross at the intersection. So, that, that's a key to, I think, everybody involved. But as far as options for our entrance, what we've looked at is initially, as you will recall, we had an entrance which came off of the existing curb cut, which services the driveway to the wastewater treatment plant. That's our most southerly option. Our second option, which is shown here, is an alignment which is directly across from the southerly entrance point into Town Hall complex. And then the third one, which I believe Brendan had made a sketch of relative to the meeting with the DOT, was, this is flipped around now, just to test everybody, so good luck with that, right? Basically, our entrance that was just shown on our plan was right here, and it came up and serviced. These gray blotches are our parking areas, and then these light outlines are our buildings. This is, this is Brendan's figure. And what Brendan looked at in this was the, the idea of taking our entrance and moving it away from this, which there are some operational issues that have been noted here, and moves, moves it more to the south, but not all the way down to the wastewater treatment area. Another option that was discussed was adding another entranceway for the parking lots of Town Hall to try to solve some of the operational issues. And there's also a potential, maybe for us even to line up with that. But, you know, the, the options for us, anywhere between here and the wastewater treatment driveway, yield similar grades, similar construction, similar site distance, all workable. The one reason we've stayed away to date from the driveway to the wastewater treatment plant was based on a comment from the Dutchess County Department of Planning, and I think others expressed concern about just the idea of sharing a driveway with wastewater treatment plant, which, you know, functionally would work for us, but is not necessarily the preferred option right now.
And Michelle, did I remember correctly that there's actually an issue with the archaeological, potential archaeological artifacts there?
Yes. The site has been largely reviewed because of previous applications, and most of the archaeology has been, they dug it up quite a bit, and they've taken out anything that was significant and categorized it. But there was one little area in, right around that entrance, that they would like to have studied further if there's going to be disturbance there. So, to avoid that, that potential for impact, the planning board might want to consider a driveway out of that location if, if it works.
Okay. And then Brendan, maybe if you can just give us a, a quick overview, there's a couple different options here that Jeff just outlined. Are there any that you see from the Town Hall perspective and, and the Fire Department perspective, where their driveways line up, where we, we lean towards one or the other of the options?
Right. What we did here, and the reason we prepared this sketch and coordinated with Jeff, was, what he alluded to is, when we were out here counting traffic and observing the function of the parking lot and the access into the Town Hall, this southerly driveway does experience some operational issues in terms of the alignment of people, the majority of the people that are using that entrance are in the parking lot adjacent to the Town Hall, but this is actually the entrance that goes into the parking lot that's for the firehouse. So, actually, cars getting over here and getting in position to come out of the 376, and then the conflict of cars coming in and out, we noticed that occurring. Also, just the, the difficulty of cars coming out here onto 376 with the amount of traffic that's on 376, and more importantly, actually, the speeds that people are driving here. We did do a little review of the, the speeds of the traffic along this section, and we have determined that the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, which relates to eighty-five percent of the cars traveling that speed or slower, is approximately forty-five miles an hour. So, and the, and the average speed being about forty miles an hour, and this being signed as a thirty-five mile an hour zone. So, that was sort of the impetus for us to ask Jeff to look at different options. And this, this option, so removes it from, away from the Town Hall entrance, moves it to the south, and then, in conjunction with that, we would recommend putting in another driveway to service the Town Hall. We, we, this drawing shows that we wouldn't take out the existing driveway that goes to the firehouse. What we would look to do is restrict its access. So, if you were in the Town Hall parking lot, it would be signed so that you wouldn't be able to enter there and come out. You would have to use the new driveway. But this, this driveway serves a purpose for the firehouse. They bring fire trucks in here. There's doors in the back, and they circulate through there. There are a couple of social functions that also happen at the firehouse. I think there's bingo on Tuesday nights, if I understand that correctly.
We've seen that, yeah.
So, you know, that parking lot is used on that occasion, at that facility. And then we're, we're trying to look at getting enough separation between these two driveways that would see, you know, reasonably significant use, such that they don't influence each other. And that's, that's the rationale behind that. We did meet with the DOT. We're going to be shortly submitting to the DOT our traffic data and our speed information, and, and then we'll work with Jeff to submit the options that we think are viable and solicit their input on what they think is, is the most appropriate treatment.
Okay.
We did, just other thing that Jeff alluded to, we did talk about potential pedestrian crossing. You know, something the DOT noted to us is that at an intersection where, regardless of where it is, where, you know, there's no traffic control, there's no signal, they, they don't like to put in crosswalks at those locations. You can legally cross at an intersection. You can cross any road at an intersection legally, but they don't like, they don't like to put uncontrolled crosswalks in those areas. If they were to evaluate and approve a crosswalk sort of in this vicinity of this corridor, they would prefer it to be sort of a mid-block crossing. And, and the rationale for that is, if they put it in, we're just going to pick a location. So, if a crosswalk was proposed to be in this area, away from any of the intersections, it could be signed in both directions, on both sides of the crosswalk, with, you know, pedestrian crossings, with the pedestrian signs and arrows pointing down to a hatch crosswalk. And that, that, that gives the most visibility for the crosswalk as opposed to putting it next to an intersection. So, I, I think that is something that we would, you know, we would recommend pursuing with the applicant and with the DOT. You know, we certainly anticipate, you know, some number of, of people that are going to want to walk to either the hamlet or to the facilities across the street, being the Town Hall, the library, the rec park behind there.
Okay. So, if we're talking about a crosswalk that would be somewhere mid-block, is the, how, how would pedestrians get to that point? I'd rather us not be walking on the shoulder, so would there be a need, then, I'm assuming, to carry a sidewalk up to the point of a painted crosswalk or something like that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I think right now, what the applicant is showing is a sidewalk network that comes out to 376. to 376. If there was a proposed crossing somewhere, you know, in this vicinity, they would need, that sidewalk would-
We'd need to bring the sidewalk to the crosswalk?
To the crosswalk, right.
Okay.
There's still, you know, it would still be absent of facilities further along from 76 or facilities on the opposite side. You know, generally, on a road of this type, 376 does have shoulders, approximately four to five foot paved shoulders, and, you know, in the absence of a sidewalk network, that would be the accommodation for pedestrians or bicycles, would be the shoulder area outside the white fog line.
Okay. Okay. Brendan, is there anything else with regard to traffic, or, I know you've done the traffic counts, you said, is there, I'm assuming all of the intersections, the different options all meet-
Yeah, just a-
...reasonable requirements?
I can give you a quick summary of that. We did do a traffic impact study. We looked at the entrance into the muse, and we also looked at the intersections of 376 and 82 to the north, and 376 and 52 to the south. This development, we did estimate the traffic generation based on the 89 units and 22 of those units being attributed to residents with developmental disabilities. The traffic, the anticipated traffic generation is approximately 45 cars in the AM peak and approximately 63 cars in the PM peak, and then that gets distributed accordingly along 376.
That's per hour, right?
What's that?
It's per hour.
In the peak hour.
Peak hour.
Yep, traffic generation in the peak hour. Their proposed access operates at a high level of service. Actually, I think their driveway, from our analysis, would operate at a level of service B at the time of construction, the anticipated time of construction in 2016, and that B would be maintained even at five years beyond the construction date. And then the level of service along 376 is hardly affected. The left turners that would come into the driveway, they would operate at a level of service A, which is the best level of service. We did study the two intersections, the intersection to the north at 82, only a minor impact to that intersection, it did not change any of the existing levels of service. The intersection to the south at 52, there was a modest impact at that intersection, and really, we've studied that intersection for the town previously, and what that relates to is that that signal is not timed very well for the traffic distribution that's there. It's an extremely heavy right turn movement off of 52 onto 376, and in the PM peak hour, that intersection does experience some delays, and any traffic that we add into that exacerbates that a little bit. So, for that, though, we would recommend, and we'll work with the applicant to do this, is to recommend to the DOT to actually take a look at that signal and look to re-time it, so that it better fits the traffic patterns that are out there. Because the way it's functioning right now is not the most efficient way that it can function. It does have a signal head that goes to the police station on the opposite side, it's supposed to be controlled or actuated so that that leg of the intersection only comes on when there's a car at the police station, but unfortunately, it's not functioning that way, that phase of the signal comes on every single cycle.
Okay.
I think that's sort of a summary of the traffic. If there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Any other questions or comments before that? Okay. Jeff, if you want to come back up, just a couple other questions. You mentioned you have the wetland permit. Do you also, are you also going to need a fill permit? Because I think we talked about, we didn't advertise, you didn't advertise for that, so if we think we're going to need one, that would be something you need to re-advertise for.
Correct, yeah, we understand that. We're a little confused about what actually gets included in that or not, so we'll get together with staff. Right now, from a mass earthwork standpoint, we believe we can balance our site, which is good news regardless of the permit, but clearly, we're going to be bringing in process aggregate for sub-base for our parking area roads, our buildings, bedding, and initial backfill for our utilities. So, we just want to be clear, because as I read, as I read the section of the code, I actually, I saw the parking lots were not included, but some of the other stuff wasn't, so we'll get with staff and figure that out. But it's highly likely that we will require that permit, and if so, we'll remedy that notice in the short term.
Okay.
We'll make that decision right away.
I was going to say, yeah, that's, you'd still have the 25-day notice requirement, so you need to-
Right, yeah. So, what we may, we may default to just putting the notice in for it, and then look at the details, and if we don't need it, so be it.
Okay. Okay. I want to just make sure that we've got a couple of things that had come up, I think, during the discussions when you were here. We were talking about some of the water and whether the buildings were going to be sprinkled, or whether you were going to have fire flow at the hydrants, or with the, has that been worked out yet, or is that still in process?
We are making progress on that. I failed to mention that with our most recent submission, we did make a revision to our water report. We did find, in the original map planner report for the Water Service District, there was a statement in there that the system is designed for needed fire flow of 1,000 gallons per minute, and had a caveat that all non-single-family homes would be required to be sprinkled. So, that gave us, you know, the blueprint of the system, what the goals of the system were. Based on that, we are proposing now to sprinkle all of our buildings, including the town homes. We just recently received the sprinkler demand from the sprinkler consultant, and we believe we have adequate pressure to deliver domestic and sprinkler flows to all of the buildings. The question is residual amounts available at the hydrants, and again, we're trying to get into the details of the system to be able to quantify that.
Okay, was that something, we have some notes from the Fire Advisory Board, was that something you also reviewed with them, or did that not come up with them?
We received no comments from them relative to that.
Okay. Okay. One other question on the roadway is, if we can go back to the full layout of the project, you have, it's a loop road, so if there's someone broken down or something like that within your loop, everyone has a way to get out, but if there was an issue, say, on 376 at the main entrance, we had talked about possibly having an emergency road and an alternate way out, is that still proposed?
Yes.
And do you need to show us where that would-
Yeah, the Cannon property is actually serviced by a driveway right now that is used to service the pump station-
Okay.
-in the northwest corner of the Cannon property, which sits back in here. So, there's a driveway entrance right off of 376, and a driveway that comes straight back like this, that's very passable gravel, wide enough for a single truck, anyway. Our proposal right now is to connect from the rear portion of our loop back into that driveway.
Okay.
So, that would allow for secondary access. We could also very easily, you know, allow for access right here off the wastewater treatment plant to get to the rear of those other buildings if someone felt that was necessary. That is the way the town is accessing the property right now, is through a driveway right there, which is very flat in that grade.
Okay. Okay.
But again, what we don't want to do is extend a driveway along the back and bring it all the way back around. That's just too disruptive, we think.
Okay. Okay. Brendan, from the perspective of emergency access only, is there any minimum standard or something for the road itself? Gravel bed is okay, or it needs to have a layer of pavement?
It does need to be maintained. I mean, if it's going to be, you know, considered to be an emergency access-
Okay.
-it's going to be, need to be maintained. Does it need to be paved? Not necessarily, but they got to demonstrate that it's going to be in a condition that is suitable for the fire apparatus and that can be maintained-
Okay.
...in the next months.
Yeah, ours, we'll get into the details of it, but my assumption is, is that that driveway is maintained because of the pump station. If that's the case, you know, we would, I think gladly can maintain this portion, is that true?
Okay.
And again, there'll be an easement associated with that, that we've talked about, the necessary easements relative to water sewer and access stormwater also.
I think there might just be a little gap between where you're showing it in and where it actually connects, but we can take a look at that, make sure we expose that gap.
Sure.
And then, in the buildings themselves, are there any elevators?
Yeah, AJ pointed out that both of the multifamily buildings-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, just the one?
The large, 30 unit, one bedroom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, right, because these are garden walk-ups, right.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure, anywhere we're putting sidewalks and things like that, anywhere where you have, we just want to make sure you have the appropriate number of ADA accessible parking spots, the appropriate width on sidewalks and things like that.
Right.
Okay. And you may have that already, I just didn't see that, and I just may have missed it, but... As far as the buildings themselves and what's in the buildings, I'm assuming there's a lighting and landscaping plan coming for the buildings, and Michelle, I'm assuming we're looking at parking allocated to each building, to make sure, I know we're land banking some, but I want to make sure there's going to be adequate parking in the right land bank spots so that each building will have the parking that it needs.
Yeah, we have provided landscaping plan, and the further details of that will be coming. We also have, I think, given a preliminary photometric plan of the site lighting. We haven't introduced the building lighting onto that yet, but we can.
Okay, so you mentioned also, community, a community room, I think, in one of the two buildings, one of the two multifamily buildings, and laundry facilities. Is there laundry facilities in each building?
No.
Okay.
No. The-
Or do the units have laundry?
Building one, with the 31 units for the one bedrooms, that is earmarked for 18 for the developmentally disabled and targeted seniors, we will have laundry on every floor. The building two, in the community room attached to building two, we have a large laundry room which will serve the rest of the complex. So, the town homes and building two will go to the laundry room, which is part of the community room. But we, for our, building one is different. As we just mentioned, there's an elevator there, we're anticipating, you know, handicapped disabled people and seniors, and the building is designed where we're able to get a pair of washers and dryers on each floor.
Okay. As far as the, and Michelle, maybe, I don't know if this is a question for you or who this is a question for, but is there a standard for number of units and how many laundry, what a laundry room should look like for 50 units?
I don't know the answer to that, but I-
I can answer that.
Oh, great.
Well, our funding agency requires a certain number of washers and a certain number of dryers per dwelling unit. So, the state building code also has a requirement, but it's, the HCR is more stringent than that.
Okay.
So, how many washers and dryers are we providing? I don't know off the top of my head. There's a good number, though, I can tell you that.
Okay.
I can, I can count that and get that back to you if you want, want to know the number.
I think I want to just make sure, again, because, you know, you're going to have folks potentially walking quite a distance to get to building two for laundry facilities, I just want to make sure that there's some way that we know that there's adequate facilities that if four people want to do laundry, there's ability to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm just going to rely on Ken's experience with this. It's always worked, yeah, there's usually, yeah, and it's-
Okay.
So, I'm confident we're going to have an adequate number.
So, you have other projects, multi-building projects where you don't have laundry in each building?
A lot of times-
It just seemed unusual to me, that's all I did, just-
I understand, but the, if building one didn't have laundry on each floor, I would say it could be a bit of an issue. But building two, the people aren't walking very far, they're right there. The town homes, I don't believe they're walking very far. What I've seen, when we've built a community room where the laundry is onsite, a lot of times, they'll go in, they'll either pay the rent, or, you know, the tenants have to be recertified every year, they'll go in and ask and drop off a piece of paper that they're looking for, they'll pick their mail up, they'll drop their laundry in, they'll go back to their apartments, you know, and come back in 45 minutes for the next cycle. It works. We use all high-quality Speedqueen machines. Sean was just crying last week and that they cost so much money, but they, we've, they're nice. When I first started, I used the GE coin operator, and GE, as good as they are, they don't make the best laundry equipment. So, we've graduated to Speedqueen, and they're commercial, they're commercial machines. So, they do the wash and they do the dry in a very expedited timeframe, and it works. We also have a card system. You go in, put $10 in, let's say, and you get a card for $10 worth of use-
Okay.
-on the machines. It, it has worked. You may always find people that either go to mom and dad's house sometimes as part of the socialization. I know our kids used to do that. And then sometimes people may use a local laundromat. It happens. But for the most part, it hasn't been an issue, and it works. As long as the laundry room is new, modern, clean, and convenient, and where it's set up, there's other things for the tenants, there's other issues going on there. We also, in the community room, will have a computer room, and sometimes some, some of the tenants, if they're not online in their apartments, they'll go and, you know, we have a series of computers set up, even if they are online in their apartments, they could just go over and hop online for 15, 20 minutes, read the newspaper, go back and check. So, you have that, you have the management office to interact there. There's bathrooms, there's a men's and women's bathroom in the community room, as well as the male.
Okay.
Okay?
Jeff, one other question, what about sign? Are you going to have a sign for the community, and where's it planned?
Yeah, the, Ken usually has a, what we call a project sign, which will say Muse at Hopple Junction, that's usually out by the entrance. I'm not sure if we've shown that location yet, but we will, and we do plan on having a project identification sign.
Okay, so our code has some requirements for that, I want to just make sure you're aware of that, and at some point, we're going to need the detail on that.
Yeah, we'll get that detail together between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
We actually do show the project sign, Eric, he's showing it to me right now. Eric went rogue on me before, I don't know if you saw that, but now he just made up for it with that.
Okay.
Yeah, he was zooming in.
Is this the sign?
Yeah, the sign's right down here.
Okay.
And that's actually, you know, that's actually another matter for us with the DOT, you know, we would need to use an occupancy permit to cite it there.
Right, and then we would just need the details, if, there may be an inset there, maybe I missed that, but we just want to see-
We have not given you the details yet.
Okay, all right.
What we typically, what we typically do is use-
How would you describe that sign, Sean? The gold engraved?
Gold engraved.
All right. Gold engraved? Okay.
What we typically do, Sean orders the signs. The signs themselves are gold leaf letters, and what we do is, we use nice stone pillars or a base to it, and fortunately, the development we're building right now in Pauling has produced a lot of nice stone and nice granite, and we, we make it look very nice. The entrance is the first, the first impression, and so we would envision a nice sign, gold leaf lettering with stone pillars and a stone base, and then some flowers and so, annual flowers.
Okay. So, that's part of the, when you have the lighting plan, the landscaping plan and all of that as well for the, for the whole site, but I know you've given us the basic drawings, but we haven't gotten into the detail of that. Michelle, can I ask you to just take a few minutes? I know you're putting, you put together the full EAF and just catch us up, I know you've had some conversations with the various agencies, Tom outlined at the beginning of the meeting, and we're still waiting on some information?
Yes, we're still waiting on the final habitat assessment, which I think is just being finalized. I have received an earlier version of it, and it was just being updated and revised to include a portion of the site that hadn't been included previously. We have been talking with the Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation quite a bit. There were a couple of sensitive areas on the site, one on the Muse property, which we've talked about before, and then one also where there was potentially going to be some water improvements. Those water improvements are not happening in that location anymore, so we've reduced that issue. We basically, we've told them that that's off the board now, and they're okay with that, so as soon as they get that revised drawing, we'll probably-
So, we're just waiting for that, okay.
Correct, yep. And I did receive the traffic summary from Brendan's office, which I'll be incorporating into the overall EAF.
Okay.
And the one issue that I'm not really sure how it's going to pan out is the long-eared bat was- Bat was recently listed, so we're still sort of waiting on guidance from DEC on how, how and what that's going to mean for the, for the project and for pretty much any project in New York State at this point. They're still kind of hammering out the details on that.
Is there an expectation that's primarily similar to the Indiana bat where it's a restriction on time of year of removal trees?
It's possible. It seems to be a little bit broader, unfortunately. So unfortunately for projects that are looking to get permits, it's a little bit more difficult, I think.
Okay.
But we don't know exactly how that's all. We've heard differing guidance on that, and we're still sort of waiting.
Okay.
But we'll certainly be speaking with DEC and U.S. Fish and Wildlife on that, on those issues. They've been notified of the project, and we've had several conversations already. And then I'm just, we're still waiting for DEC to do a final verification of the wetland line, which I believe is happening this week.
Okay. And I know, are we, do we have a response from the school district? Are we waiting on a response?
We're still, we have, I've had a couple of conversations with the school district. We're still waiting on a response.
Okay. And you provided to them the, I'm sorry, I was going to say, you provided to them the estimate of children...
Yes, we provided, yes, we provided them with an estimate of the number of children the project would generate, asked them to look at it. And also, I had a request today that they, we provide them with a site plan. They wanted to see the site layout as well, so I'll be providing that in an email tomorrow.
Okay. And are we, I know you're talking with them, but are we, we're expecting something back from them in writing, hopefully for the...
I believe so, yes, yes.
Yeah, I just want to go on record as saying that we always solicit that input to the public. I mean, every project asks a letter from the school district, so...
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Michelle, is there anything else that we're waiting on for, from a studies or agency perspective?
No, we, we just need to finalize the last details of what I just discussed. We do have a water report that will be summarized and included, and I think that's about it.
Okay. Okay. And then Larry, is there anything that we want to go over from your perspective? I know that we were talking a little bit about the stormwater ponds, and there's probably some additional diagrams coming.
Right. You know, Jeff's firm has been advancing the technical aspects of the project, the water. You touched on a little bit already, the sewer as well and storm. We've got comments that I think, you know, are probably just appropriately addressed between his firm and mine, unless you have anything that you wanted to bring up. The one thing that I would like to bring up is something I had mentioned before the meeting, and Jeff just didn't make our, our comment letter. Just in the discussions of what's taking place, what I'll call the front of the project, that area of the road that looks like it might potentially provide some form of access to the, to the adjacent remaining lands of the Cannon property, there probably should be some form of an easement contemplated in that area as well. So other than that, you know, again, our comments remain basically, you know, technical and, you know, I think that the, the level of detail that's been provided is appropriate with the status of the project as it progresses. Probably very soon, they'll be assembling a submission to the health department as well. So that's where things will really start to congeal.
Okay. So Jeff, maybe one thing, if you can just point out for us. I know you've got some off-site drainage to the top of the drawing here, and I think there's one other pond anticipated. If you can just walk us through that quickly, and it will open for public comment. I'm sorry.
We're guided by the state standards for stormwater, which have just recently, once again, been updated. There's a new general permit for construction activities that was just released earlier this year. Those requirements have been further turned up in terms of green infrastructure inclusion and runoff reduction, which is fancy words for trying to minimize the impacts of runoff. And one of the primary goals is really to try to infiltrate the stormwater instead of let it run off into adjacent areas where it can become problematic. So to that end, we've incorporated, I think it's four infiltration areas, one in the front, one, two in the green area in the center, and then one toward the rear of the property. And those four infiltration areas are really meant to meet our green infrastructure runoff reduction and water quality requirements. Second to those water quality related items are peak runoff for the 10 and 100-year storms to minimize impacts to existing drainage infrastructure as well as flooding. And the site sets up with an existing depression right here in this area, which is about eight feet deep. We're actually directing, and that's where our runoff naturally goes. And we're running our drainage after the infiltration systems to that point and allowing it to go there as it has in the past to settle out, to basically attenuate over time. And then we've provided a release for it back out into the, into the DEC wetland. One of the things we were asked to do with this by the down engineer was to look at the contributing area of the northern portion of the Cannon property, which now drains there, and look at the ability of this as a stormwater basin to accommodate that for future development. And we've done that in our stormwater report. And this existing feature is capable of dealing with our development and the future Cannon development after the water quality impacts associated with RV and WQV are dealt with, similar to us. So that, that was good news.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
I've got several.
Okay.
Something I haven't heard about, how do you guys handle smoking and pets? Because I know that's, I have friends that live in condos, and that's normally a contentious issue.
Smoking will be...
And pets.
Yeah. We have not set up our buildings as non-smoking buildings. We have buildings now that we're being asked to convert to non-smoking. But it's mixed. You have people in there who have been there for 10 or 12 years, and they smoke, and other people don't. So as of today, I was not setting these up as, as smoke-free buildings. Pets, no. Recently, we've changed that on some of our projects if they're, you know, for the frail elderly, 62 and older, and they need companionship. But I just, for the most part, we say no to pets.
Just came to mind, I have weird thoughts. You also said a pair in the 30 units, a pair of washer-dryers on each floor. Does that mean two units, both which do wash and dry?
There's four.
Steam, steam washers?
Right. One washer, one dryer for each floor.
Okay, so they are separate units, not combined units?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things I think we need, I think that the school district has brought this up a few times, and we haven't addressed it, is, and maybe Michelle could, is the number of children not just in groups? Because they're talking about rebalancing the Wapakus District because we have too many little kids in some places, too many big kids in some places. Is it possible to give an estimate of the number of children by school type to the Wapakus Central Board?
Yes, we...
And I brought this up before, but it's kind of just gone away?
An estimate was prepared using the multiplier report that the school district typically uses to determine the number of students generated by...
Michelle, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry.
The, we did do an estimate based on the number of units and the types of units. We did it in general, how many students we thought would be generated by the project, and then we did it by grade level. We provided that to the school district for comment. And we did use the same exact report, multiplier report that the school district uses. So they'll review that and make sure that they're in agreement with the numbers.
So they do have it by grade level?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I didn't hear that mentioned before.
Yes.
The other thing is public transport. Now, I know we have the Loop buses, they don't run very often, and I don't think they're scheduled to stop at your place. We're supposed to take action, who's supposed to do something so that public transport gets there?
The Loop bus does run daily to the AMP. We are in discussions with the Loop bus to extend service down 376 to our site. What I do know is they will bring a van in for any disabled tenants or senior tenants. They've committed to that. In addition, Buildings First has their own van for their, for their clients. But for right now, the, the disableds and the seniors will be able to be transported by a, a smaller van provided by the Loop system. We do not have an agreement yet to, to take it in there. We are, we will be providing a, a school bus, a bus shelter. And hopefully, this can serve multiple purposes. Some of our other developments, we've been able, we've been successful in working with the municipalities and Dutchess County and, and other municipalities in extending their service and...
So something is in the works to get it to happen?
There's the...
Not just, we're going to hope, publish it?
Yes. But I, I think we've, we've closed the Loop on the, on the disabled and the seniors, but now we're going one step further.
Okay. The next question. You talked about the 30 units being for low income. Is that still the 60% level?
Uh...
30 units?
Hold on.
Is it the one-bedroom units?
Oh, the one-bedrooms.
I didn't catch the percentage.
Sure. The one-bedroom units are actually, are actually at 50, 50%. We have 18 at 50%. The, those are the non-developmental disabled units. What we did there is it's targeting seniors. That's, that's the level that, it's been my experience. I just rented 150 units of, of senior housing. And, you know, when you get up to the 60% range for seniors, it starts to get a little difficult. The market for seniors, we believe, is somewhere between 40 and 50% of median. So we set that up. The other one-bedrooms that I referred to are, 18 of them are for the developmentally disabled. And what happens is the rent is partially subsidized by OPWDD. Some, they receive some social security, and then the balance of the rent is actually subsidized by...
Two-bedroom units?
The two-bedroom units are at 60%.
Okay. So we have a lot of units still for workforce housing?
Oh, no doubt.
Okay, that, that was just, because I was computing the higher units in my head, and there we're pushing on close to 80%. And, you know, that's considered, you know...
No, the lower, the lower incomes that we're targeting are the, are really the first building. Primarily one-bedroom units, and primarily, like I said, 18 of them are set aside, if you will.
But it sounds like some of the two-bedroom units are too. Workforce housing, 60%?
The two-bedrooms that we have are at, we have 32 at 60%. Then we have that two above 60% that go up to 80. And then on, on the three-bedrooms, we have 12 at 60%, and we have two above...
So we have a lot of real workforce housing.
The...
I'm sorry, I just thought that...
No, I, I agree. The income bands that we're serving, and, and again, I mentioned the income limits going up every year because...
That was the part I latched on to when I was a little...
Oh, it is. And, you know, we're now, as I mentioned previously, it's, you know, we're up in, in the mid-50s.
Now, one final question. I'm not sure who to address this to. You mentioned sealed units for energy efficiency. I assume most condos I've seen have the combination electric units, air conditioning and heat. I don't know if you're planning on, and then they have a closet with like a hot water tank in it.
Yes, that's what we've done.
I don't know if that's what you're planning on doing?
Yes. Well, we have a split system. It's HVAC system. It's a forced hot air, Energy Star system with, with air conditioning. Every unit has, has AC. And then we use tankless hot water heaters. It's in a closet, so the furnace is in the closet, and we have a tankless hot water heater that hangs on, on the wall that is only, it only heats the hot water on demand. It's not constantly heating.
How'd I do?
Good. We're gas-fired.
Yeah, gas-fired.
Yeah, okay. Now, that brings up the, if they're sealed units, we happen to have enough infiltration with gas units.
That's a good question.
That's a great question.
That's where I was going next.
We introduce...
I just want to make sure you're next to them. We just need to make sure we're picking...
We introduce an HRV, which is a ventilator. The bathroom fan would go on and goes on every hour and brings air out of the unit and basically circulates there because you're exactly right, the units are too tight for the proper air exchange that's required.
How do you get input that the fan exhausts out where you found infiltration or...
No, I don't think, I don't think we need input. I think the unit is not that tight, like it'll still pull air.
So I know when they sealed airplanes, they had a big problem when they stopped recirculating the air.
Yeah, we're not quite at that point, but significantly better than most...
I'm done, I just, questions that bothered me.
Thanks, Bob. Other, other questions or comments from board members?
I'll open the public comments, because I'm actually a neighbor of this, and I just want to say welcome. I think it's a great project. I think there was a lot of resistance in the other site because people didn't want this near them. But I say welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. What I'd like to do now, we have a sign-up sheet on the corner of the table up here. What we'll do is we'll have folks sign in, and once you sign in, we'll call you up in the order that you've signed in.
May I take the sign-up?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you, Bob. So if you give us some, if, give us a moment, we'll, we'll just break for a minute while everybody who would like to make public comment, if we can just have you sign in on the form, that would be great. Is there anyone who'd like to sign up? You'll have another chance as we go through this if there's something you hear that you'd like to comment on. All right. Can we, can we have the first name for them?
Anne.
Anne? And I would just ask, as you come up, give us your full name, just so that we're, we can catch you for the minutes, just...
Anna Cover. I've been a resident in East Fischel for quite some time. I continue to have mixed concerns about this project. If I'm wrong in any of my data, Dr. Fox can correct me because I've done a lot of research. I have a handicapped child. And I have a cousin who's a senior. And my husband and I begged Mary Ann to come and live with us, and we offered her free housing. And some of her issues with living out here, I think, need to be considered. And Mary Ann's issue's considered. Lack of public transportation. You can't guarantee the Loop. I had kids who went to Lord's, and we tried to work with the Loop system to provide transportation for the Pauling kids, and there's no guarantee. Lack of cab service. Another one of my cousin's concerns was if something happens to me and you're not home, how am I going to get medical care short of calling an ambulance? You know, if you're in the city of Newburgh, it's $5 to $7, anywhere within the city limits to get to a school. It's easy to get to the hospital. All our services are a half hour away in Dutchess County. And as for the handicapped, I've worked in facilities with apartments for handicapped, and I am concerned with the model because, and Dr. Fox can correct me, all your clients are going to be serviced under an ISP, an individual service plan. An individual service plan minimally requires the social worker or case manager to meet twice a year. So it's entirely possible that people who are housed here are only... So it's entirely possible that people who are housed here are only gonna see somebody from Abilities First twice a year. The program I worked in, we actually had somebody onsite twenty-four-seven. It wasn't, if there was a crisis in the middle of the night, there was always somebody there, there was always somebody available. During the day, there were additional people. I am concerned about this. As we have looked at the handicap differently, we are doing much to them that we have done to the mentally ill, where we are pushing people who maybe aren't quite ready out on their own. So we're going to put them in a site a half hour from services. If one of them has a crisis and you call Abilities First, they call their case manager, and their case manager isn't there, they're given two phone numbers to call. So you're now talking a half hour, forty-five minutes before they may even speak to anybody. I am concerned about it. I, and my other thing is, and, um, Dr. Fox, you can correct me if I'm wrong, he can't guarantee that they're all gonna be from Abilities First because there are other agencies who have multiple client lists that are looking for housing. And as soon as these units become available, these people have the right to tap them. It isn't necessarily gonna be restricted to Abilities First. So I think we need to look at the big picture. We can't just say, great, they're gonna come in, they're gonna do this. He may have people who only see their case managers twice a year. He can't offer you twenty-four-hour service. You're a half hour away from his program, and you can't guarantee everybody's gonna be Abilities First. You could end up with people from Orange County. I have a student I had that I'm still in touch with the family. Her case manager's looking for housing. You don't think when this opening shows up, they're gonna apply? Therefore, you're gonna have people who might be half hour, forty-five minutes to an hour away from their support system. So I'm not opposed to the handicap, but I think we need to relook at the model and perhaps modify it, taking into consideration where we live and where we are. Most of them aren't gonna have cars. We don't have a very good sidewalk system in the city, in the Hopewell Junction. We don't have a very good bus system in this Hopewell Junction. You know, if you live in the city of Newburgh or the city of Poughkeepsie, there's major bus stops, and you go, and there's whole loads of people there. But I think before we jump into this, we need to look at the big picture because we could even end up with people from Westchester County who are handicapped if they qualify. You know, the Abilities First is not the only game in town. There's Taconic Innovations, there's Devereaux, there's Anderson School, there are several other ones in Orange County, and there are other ones in Westchester. And now, you know, Taconic Innovations is making a big move here in Hopewell. You can't say it's gonna be just Abilities First. In fact, Taconic Innovations has more of a presence right now in Hopewell than Abilities First has. Just throwing that out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, do you wanna, do you wanna come up and just offer?
Sure. I won't correct you, I'll just add, add a couple, a couple of, uh-
Should I get into case management from Matt after this?
No, 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 don't do that. It is, it is true that folks, every, every person that we would serve here in this community would be getting case management services, otherwise known as service coordination, and that they may not see their service coordinators very often. But it's not that service that we'd be providing that would be taking care of their day-to-day, week-to-week needs. It's an entirely different service called community habilitation. And there are staff members who are trained, not service coordinators, but community have providers that would be there however much they're needed according to their service plan. So if that's daily, they'd be there daily. The other thing that, even though it's true that there are other providers out there, we are not the only game in town, but part of the reason that you see us standing here rather than somebody from Devereaux or Anderson Center is because those organizations tend to provide services to people who have disabilities that are quite severe in the residential program. What's kind of unique about our residential program is that we're providing services to a lot of people who are very, very capable and who are over-served by being in a group home. They don't need that level of intensive twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week support. So these are people who, you know, would thrive in, in this kind of setting. So, and it is true that folks getting residential services from other providers could apply, but they would have to apply, apply through us, through Abilities First. We would control that application process. But we honestly don't believe that will be necessary because we have so many folks who would, who would fit in this, in this setting, in our current, in our current programs. And what will happen is there are literally thousands of people with more severe disabilities sitting on waitlists throughout New York State and, you know, many in, in Dutchess County who can't get into a group, who do need that twenty-four-seven intensive service that's in, that you get in a group home. But they can't get in until we make room for them. And the only way we make room for them is by taking people who don't need that level of service but are taking those beds and moving them into a setting like this. So there's this whole chain reaction that would be set up by, by doing this that's gonna allow the families of potentially twenty-six people who may be struggling right now to provide the support to somebody who needs a group home setting and is, can't remain with their families anymore because their, you know, their needs are too great. So-
With regard to the, the comment about someone in crisis who needs assistance, what is the, what is the typical method for that?
Yep.
Because he probably wouldn't be there twenty-four-seven or potentially not there twenty-four-seven.
We could be there twenty-four-seven if we needed to be.
Okay.
And, and I think at, at the beginning, that would probably be our plan, is to have somebody there to assess each person's needs, make sure that they're, they're capable of being there on their own. And there's a possibility we could pull that away with safety nets and not necessarily, you know, drawing on, on public services at first, but with, you know, systems that we put into place. A lot of organizations like ours are using technology, you know, to provide services remotely, whether that's video technology or, or audio technology. So we would look at possibilities like that. But if somebody, if somebody did demonstrate a need to have that level of, of support twenty-four hours a day, we would either provide that, and if it seemed like they needed it in the long term, we would relook at their, the appropriateness of their living in a setting like this.
Okay.
What about the supervisor who lives there? Any role there?
Good question, Mike. That's just what Sean reached over. Our superintendents have, we have different communities, and each community has different needs. Our superintendent is, evolves or morphs depending upon the special needs population. Here, what we would expect is this, if there's a crisis, happens at night, happens on a weekend, nobody's here, they're gonna make the emergency notifications. The superintendent may not be trained or qualified to deal with a, a special needs population, but they will make the notifications and, and assess the situation and try to stable the situation. And then Jeff's people will come, and we will come. We have backups in place. In case of emergencies, we come. So yes, the superintendent, if, if something happens during the day, Monday through Friday, or onsite manager will, will augment. We do have, from time to time, you know, with, with seniors, we have health issues and we have a crisis, and our, our supers are good. They're onsite. If, if they're not good, they move on. I just wanna add two more things to what Jeff said. I'm the guy who deals with the funding. And with the funding come a lot of requirements and deed restrictions and so forth that hold you feet to the fire. When I did this application for tax credits, in order to be considered supportive housing, you not only had to set aside twenty-five percent of the units, you needed to, to prove three things. One, that an agency that deals with a special needs population is willing to put in capital money for the construction. We got that. Two, they wanted to see if that agency will help augment, provide some type of rental subsidy for the special needs population. We got that. And the third piece is the agency, OPWDD, will provide an ongoing operating subsidy to Abilities First, to allow Abilities First to, to provide the services. In addition to that, the way I set up the application, we have twenty-two units are set aside for the developmental disabled population. Those twenty-two units come from referrals from Abilities First. I did the application, I know. I set it up this way, and it goes through Abilities First. If Abilities First doesn't have, as Jeff just stated, if he doesn't have enough, then it's up to Abilities First if they wanna take everything. But the way this community is set up, the way my funding is set up, and the way I answer to HCR, that's, that's exactly how it's set up. We just cut a ribbon on Friday, High Ridge Gardens, it was a very innovative supportive housing development in Poughkeepsie. More, I would say more intense than this. Two-thirds of the population was special needs, and all of the tenants that came there, there were fifty special needs tenants, all of the tenants came referrals from our not-for-profit partner, which is RSS. Every one of them. They didn't come from all over, maybe they took referrals from somebody else. But we dealt with RSS, single-pointed access, and they came in. And it's working. It's working. Their, their group, it's not OPWD, it's OMH, and we're getting the monthly rental subsidy. OMH did everything they would do. And one more thing. Jeff and I have talked about this, and if the board is okay with it. In the office, what we've done in some of our other places, we've retrofitted a couple of our places after the storms of a few years ago, Hurricane Irene and Sandy, some of our places lost power. You know, and the first thing they do, they call us, and Sean and I go, and other family members, and, and we mobilize, and we do the best we can. We have generators, we get everybody there, and we notify the next of kin and so forth. But we did have a, a bit of a crisis about seven, eight years ago. Somebody went on vacation, turned the heat off, and a pipe broke. It was, it was a situation, a building had to be evacuated, and we had to spend the whole night there. So what we did is we retrofitted in our community room, I'm sorry, in, in our management office, we added a shower. We added a shower, and in a big room, we're putting in a, a pull-out couch. So in case of crisis, you don't have to, you know, if you have to catch a couple hours in order to get through, you can do it. So we, we've talked about that here in this office, is incorporating, you know, a full bathroom with a shower in case somebody comes down for a crisis or whatever. And as Jeff says, it turns into more, it's, it's almost like a, a little dorm room. And it's not a unit, it's not an apartment, but it's something we have talked about, and we can incorporate that into the Abilities First office if, if you prefer. Okay?
Jeff, is that something that you're interested in?
Yes.
I wouldn't object to that. I don't, I don't know how the other board members feel, but it seems like if we-
I don't see much downside.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other thing I just wanted to add too is, is that there may not be one, one protocol for everybody to follow with, with an emergency. And, you know, we were talking about an individualized service plan before. It's an ISP, it's something that everybody has, everybody that gets our services, and one, one standard section of that is a safeguard section. So for each individual person, we would evaluate their needs, the kind of crisis that they might experience based on their medical history or the behavioral history, those kinds of things, and develop a specific protocol. So if this person were to experience this type of problem, here are the steps that he or she would follow, and here are the steps that we would follow in order to make sure their, their needs were met.
With regard to the individual service plan, I'm not sure I understood all of the terminology. The ISP, you, you used another phrase, and I didn't catch, community something, and I didn't catch what you said.
Community habilitation.
Community habilitation. And that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep. It's a, it's a OPWDD-funded service. And when we're talking about OPWDD committing ongoing operating funds, that's part of what we're talking about, is this is a service that's designed one-on-one, a single staff, trained staff member is allocated to a single individual for a certain number of hours per week to address their specific needs.
And I, I wanna say, you described before, it could be anything from balancing a checkbook to doing other types of household things or to doing specific support type?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. And it's, you know, it's called habilitation distinguished from rehabilitation because in our system, it's kind of assumed that we're helping somebody develop skills that they may never have had before.
Okay.
So it's an initial gathering of those skills. So it's whatever they might need to be successful living on their own, cooking, cleaning, medical, medical needs, financial needs, those, those kinds of things.
Okay. And can I just ask? I, I understood the, there's both long-term financing, it sounded like for the development offered by OPWDD, but you also said operational support?
Yes.
And funding. Is there a commitment at a certain number of years? Is that an annually renewable thing, or how, how does that part work?
The way, the way our system works is once, once a person's deemed eligible for OPWDD services, they, it's, it's possible but extremely rare that that funding would be pulled from them. So it's an ongoing lifelong commitment.
So it's a per-individual commitment as opposed to something funded through two Abilities First to provide support to a certain number of people?
Correct. So the way that it works is, you know, go back to the individualized service plan is like a, like a prescription for services.
Okay.
It's like, oh, here's the individual, and here's what services they need. And then once those services are identified in the ISP, and those services are approved by OPWDD, the funding comes in per individual for those services. And right now in our system, it's, it's based on fee for service. So if the ISP says this person gets community have five times a week, we provide community have on that schedule, and then we bill for that service and get paid for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And presumably then the ISP would be reviewed periodically and adjusted as needed based on experience of-
Yep. By regulation, it's reviewed every six months, and there's a, at least a, a meeting of the person's, what we call a circle of support annually, their family, their friends, their people that are important to them to help design that plan.
And that, you'd expect to be able to use the community room or be able to do that right onsite as opposed to having to go somewhere else?
Yes. That's, one of the really nice features of this is that we are going to have some of our service coordination on, which handles the ISP onsite. So even though, as we touched on before, the service coordinator, which is separate from community have, may only by, by requirement see a person face-to-face a couple of times a year, they, the service coordinator generally sees them more often and no, contacts with them more often, knows them. So just passing them by in the hallway, seeing them coming in and out, maybe they'll go up and knock on their door and see how they're doing, stop over for dinner, you know, those, those kinds of things.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's our, who's our next speaker? I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said.
Bill Quinn.
Bill?
Yes.
Great.
My name is William Quinn. I've lived and been involved in this community for, since nineteen ninety-eight. I'm thirty-eight years old, and I have a master's in social work. And like I said, I've lived and worked and been active in this community for over, over ten years, almost twenty, actually. It's, I'm getting old. But the thing is, I come here in support of Dr. Fox because although things may not be perfect, this needs to happen because nobody's forcing people to apply for apartments, but they need to be given the opportunity. I'm thirty-eight years old with a master's degree. I'm still living at home with my parents, or with my mom, rather, because there's no accessible housing. Nobody is forcing anybody, and I just come, wanna come as a public voice to demonstrate what people with disabilities are capable of. I have a master's degree, and I'm a former human rights commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Yes. Hi. Hi, John. 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 Hi, John.
John McHugh, a longtime resident of Hopewell. And it's been mentioned by the group that there was...
Pick up the mic, please.
NYSERTA and LEED certifications that have been, have these plans been looked at and certified by NYSERTA?
I'll answer the planning board again.
Just wait, we'll call you back up in a minute.
Okay. And the LEED certification would come after that? After the building?
We'll confirm that.
Was completed?
Okay.
Okay. Are school buses going to be able to go into the property?
I believe, and Jeff, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, I believe right now there is a sidewalk to towards 376 and there's a bus shelter at the entranceway to the project.
So they won't be able to go into the...
Well, they could, but the policy of the school district does not go on private property.
Okay.
So it's not going to be a public road.
Okay. And the sidewalks, which we talked about at the other site and this site, they will be provided into town?
We're still working on the pedestrian access plan, but yes, we're expecting sidewalks to help pedestrians get from the development out to 376 and across 376 and into town.
Okay, so that would be pre-development?
It would be concurrent. There'd be a highway work permit typically if we're putting sidewalks along 376. It would depend where the sidewalk is.
Okay. And facilities for getting across 376, has that been approved by DOT?
Brendan, I know you've had meetings with DOT, but I think that's still a work in progress. Can you...
Yeah. Nothing has been submitted to the DOT at this point for that. I think when I talked about that issue, it's something that we're going to recommend to be pursued by the applicant to get the DOT to potentially approve a crossing of 376. But it has to be reviewed by them. They have a special pedestrian bicycle group that does those reviews and looks at individual sites and determines the appropriate...
And again, that would be pre-development?
What would, ultimately DOT is going to have to approve what goes in. They would approve it before any construction would happen on the development.
As far as the timing of the construction of the sidewalks, that would all be done based on when the highway work is being done. So whether it's before or after, you wouldn't have COs for the project until the plan meets its site plan requirements, which would include the sidewalks.
Thank you, Ms. Key.
Thank you.
Good evening all. My name is Claire Moran. I work, I live, and I volunteer in this town. I have a 30-year-old developmentally delayed son, and this would be ideal for him. He's not, he works in this, he works in the town, he volunteers in the town. He just can't live on his own. He can't budget money. He can't, he can take care of himself. He can cook, he can do laundry, he can do everything. He's watching this at home on TV and saying, wait, ask them this and ask them that. This means so much to so many people, you have no idea. Please pass this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we call our next name, I apologize, I forgot to ask you to come up and tell us about NYSERTA and LEEDs. Sorry about that.
So how the process works is, of course, we need planning board approval and then we need to be funded by the state. Once we're funded by the state, we prepare our construction drawings. And as part of that process, we hire a HERS raider and that HERS raider is also a LEED for homes, Green Raider. So that person has already been identified, the consultant that leads us through both processes, both applications at the same time, the NYSERTA application and the LEED for homes application. It's going to be one firm. The Carneys already have a contract with that firm. We had to show that contract as part of our funding application. So they're actually using that firm already on their project that's under construction in Pauling, which is also the same thing. So once the project is funded, we will start working on the drawings. Our office will work with the energy consultant, using the different terms for the same person or the same consultant. And then they prepare those applications. And then they have a construction presence as the project goes through. They come, they look at the insulation, they check things off for what we're installing, if it's as per plan. And then eventually, they follow that paperwork up with both individual agencies. For LEED for homes, there's no money incentive. You're just, you're certified and you get a plaque. For NYSERTA, there is a per-unit incentive that the project will eventually recover. It's usually several years down the road. So it's, and it usually just pays for the Green Raider, really.
I'm sorry, if there's an issue, it's not like you just get rejected and that was that. You go back at it and you keep doing it to get your certification.
Well, my office puts the drawings in the position, we're responsible to put the drawings where the drawings are approved by both agencies.
Okay, what happens if it gets rejected?
Well, there's no, if you follow the process, you're going to do, you're going to get both.
Good evening. Sean Carney, Carney Realty Group. Throughout the process, they come and inspect. So they'll inspect our framing to make sure it's appropriate and advanced framing techniques and we won't be able to insulate until we pass that. Then the same with the insulation, the sheet rocking, the air sealing. So it's all these different steps along.
So it's not a possibility? That's what you're saying? It's not a possibility?
We would be in deep trouble with our funding sources if...
Okay.
Yeah.
So in terms of, since you're making the representation that you'll have these certifications, is this something where you would provide us prior to signing a map, you'd provide us with evidence of the application and then the building department would see that you're following that process? Or how would the town be assured that that's happening?
Well, the building department is not responsible for enforcing any of these things. They're responsible for enforcing the state building code and your local planning and zoning.
I understand.
So as a courtesy, we could circle back at some point and provide the town with documentation, probably at the end for LEED for homes when we're certified. NYSERTA really doesn't really, they just would give you a letter.
They're not user-friendly, NYSERTA.
Yeah.
I'm shocked.
So...
But there must, I mean, I'm sure there's a paper trail. There's something that you could show to say, hey, we've started the process, we're working through or something like that.
Actually, it'll be on our drawings for the building permit. I mean, that would be part of all the documents that we file with the town. So it's going to say LEED for homes on there and...
We'll get our certifications probably five, three to five months after our COs.
Okay.
So we can always pass it on to the town and we can ask our consultant if they can provide the town with our application to NYSERTA at the time. Maybe they can CCU.
Yeah, I mean...
Never done it, but we probably could.
I'm not sure.
It's just a matter of, you know, I think that's a great thing, right? To build an energy-efficient building, to use energy-efficient practices. So if we're saying that's what we're doing, I think I just want to make sure that if we're saying that in the public forum here, that we're carrying through with it.
I mean, however, we'll communicate with you.
Okay.
And we'll be in touch with the building department. It's probably their role because they're going to have the role through construction and however they want to do it.
I'm not suggesting the town needs to monitor anything, but I'm suggesting that we just want to make sure that when you're saying this is what's happening. And I understand what you're saying about funding sources, but just, you know, since it's...
It could be more of a timing issue for when we can get the documentation.
Right.
We just finished a development up that we opened up three or four months ago.
We just want to catch you for, I'm sorry, it's hard for us to...
We just, three or four months ago, we opened the latest community up and we just received something from NYSERTA. I had to sign something last week. I don't know what I signed, but we're still not done. So it's, so I guess, whatever we get, we're glad to share, but it's a timing issue. I just don't want it to be tied to like a CO because that becomes problematic.
Okay. I think I'm just looking for the understanding that you're moving forward with what you say, you say moving forward with. So it sounds like we can figure that out.
Our funding will require us to do that. So it's not an option.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McHugh, could I just ask you, was, did that answer your question? And you can come on back up. I'm sorry, I don't want to yell across the room, but...
Not totally, no. We welcome the facility. It seems like a wonderful plan. My work with NYSERTA, NYSERTA stands for New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. And they will become instrumental in helping with the planning and certifying those plans, my understanding, not after the fact, but before the fact.
Okay.
Especially with the safety of an aged population and the handicapped population, it becomes even more important on things like you mentioned with on-demand water heaters and things like that. You know, can imagine how critical that's going to be. And one elevator in a 30-unit building, is that going to be an efficient way of doing it? If there is a, an emergency and that elevator cannot be used, is there going to be another egress for handicapped and aged people? So those types of things, NYSERTA also takes into consideration, would be very helpful with the planning, I'm sure.
Okay. Okay.
So I think it's not after the fact with NYSERTA. They can step the plans beforehand and look at them, see if they're energy efficient and make recommendations. They're very helpful, have been with me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Come on back up, that's fine.
Again, our, we hire a HERS raider to deal with NYSERTA. And NYSERTA will not deal with me as the architect or the owner. They only hire, they only deal with their consultants. And I've probably been involved with at least a dozen NYSERTA-approved projects. So this is not our first go-around with NYSERTA. As far as the elevator, that is, that is actually, you're going to have no problem with one elevator per 30...
I'm assuming two-story buildings, so 15 units would be using that elevator regularly.
I mean, I've built, I've been part of 60-unit seniors with one elevator.
I'm just confirming though, am I correct on that? That's, it's a two-story building, so the elevator primarily used by the 15 units on the second floor?
Yes. I'm sorry to answer your question, that's correct. And you would not use the elevator in terms of an emergency. You use the staircases on either ends of the building. Those staircases are, have what's called an area of refuge for handicapped, so that a handicapped person can find an area of refuge inside a rated enclosure, which a staircase is, and then they wait for assistance there.
And it's in the state park.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So that's all parcel.
And so that's built into the plan, or, okay. Okay. Michelle or Scott, can I just ask if we can gain an understanding of where we should put this in our process as far as making sure that it's moving along the way we're expecting the NYSERTA and the LEEDs certification?
It's not a problem. I've done it before in another community. I just have to refresh my memory as to where it fit in.
Okay.
I know, I think what it is, the approval is there before CVO, but they don't get the paperwork to finalize it and the final sign is still after. But it is, there is a, I forget what document we rely on and then eventually got the final work solved.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Absolutely, come on.
Even though that kind of defend-and-place strategy for fire evacuation is acceptable, we would avoid having people in, who are non-ambulatory on the second floor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. But that's not to say that there wouldn't be someone visiting somebody on the second floor that would require that type of accommodation?
I suppose.
No, I mean, it's there because people can visit that may have a need for an elevator...
The state fire code.
Sure. Yeah.
The state fire code is going to require an ad for a two-story building for evacuation.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is possible.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The next name on our list?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Janet McHugh. I am a 29-year resident of the town of East Fishkill. I live less than one mile from this project. And I had a whole long speech for you tonight, but I'm going to cut it short and I'm going to keep it simple. And I'm going to tell you that I am very much in favor of this project. It's long overdue. It's going to benefit many of our residents in many different ways. I'm asking all of you to consider it, move it along, move it along quickly and make this happen. It's a great thing for all of us. I welcome this project and I welcome the Carney Group to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the project or offer additional comments? Come on up, that's fine.
I do have one other question. You were correct about the buses not going in, but if a student has an IEP and they're living in the residential section, under state law, if they have an IEP and the IEP states portal to portal, that means a bus would need to come in and bring them to their home. So that would be concerned that a bus could go through.
It's designed to take the fire trucks.
Okay, I wasn't sure, that's why I was asking.
And does it require that it be a bus?
Uh-huh.
Does it require that it be a bus?
Most kids who are, they're not on the big buses, but they are on the smaller, up to 16-person buses. So I just wanted to clarify that, I wasn't sure.
Designed the largest fire vehicle the town owns, which is bigger than us.
Okay, well, that wasn't what you had said before, which is why I asked.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's a good question. And one of the things that Brendan does when he looks at traffic, he looks at, we call it site circulation, and he makes sure that large equipment, including school buses, would be able to circulate the site.
So this site's going to be designed to handle the large fire apparatus for the town and it'll actually handle a WB40 tractor-trailer because that's a common type of vehicle that would be for moving or delivering in certain cases. So it'll handle a school bus.
Well, and I asked it because I know that part of the redistricting, the school district, is that they are going to shift services for special education and most of the specialized classes are going to be a bit more separated in the effort to be efficiency. Not every building is going to duplicate every program. So it is possible, there is a child who is going to be transported to Sheaf Road or Vassar Road or even Royce Ketchum or one of the other programs. My other thing is, I really do support the idea of, with Dr. Fox, of putting somebody in there, because I had worked as one of those persons who went in and taught skills. And I know that no matter how careful you are, no matter how well you plan, there is a crisis. And I do remain concerned that we at least look at, with Dr. Fox, perhaps putting in more standards for support, maybe going back and re-looking at the ISP, the safety part of it. And I know some people think I'm mean. I do have a handicapped child and I've worked in handicapped advocacy. I just want to see it to be the best thing for them, not something tacked on so that they can get this project built and someone can make money. If we're going to use the handicapped, then let's do it right. Let's not just tack it on so someone can make their money.
Can you share with me, because I don't have the experience that you have, are you thinking of something like, and I just, like a medic alert or an intercom system?
It could be anything. Program I worked at, we had several different things. We actually had a studio apartment where there was always staff on 24/7 during the day. There was a greater number of staff because staff would go in and handle other issues. But I do think that we need to have a way for them to communicate if there's a crisis. And it could be something as simple as, there's a huge thunderstorm and Olivia can't handle it and she is cowering under her bed in the middle of the night. It could be something as simple as that to a client who mixes up their medication. And some of the medications are very powerful. The medications my son is on, my husband and I rigidly monitor because our doctor has said, you need to time this or there will be a reaction.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure every safeguard is built in because we're not close to anything here.
Okay.
And maybe, I'm going to throw this out, we, you know, on the side, we can do additional training with the fire department, ambulance service to provide them with the support.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Jeff, can I just ask, are those things that you've considered that are part of the plan? I know we haven't talked a lot about the details of what the ISPs entail and the typical things that you build into this, but...
Yeah, exactly the kinds of things that she was talking about are the things that often go into an ISP and may go into the safeguard section of an ISP. And short of giving, you know, specific examples of those kinds of things, I guess I could say that Abilities First has been providing these kinds of services for... say that Abilities First has been providing these kinds of services for over 50 years in the Hudson Valley and is pretty expert at, you know, dealing with crises. We, we're already serving somewhere around 30 or 40 people in residences that have less than 24-hour support and have found ways of dealing with, supporting people without these kinds of catastrophes.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking, or kind of focused on is, is there anything that would, we would potentially want to include in the site plan? So again, I'll just use, and I'm making this up, the concept of some type of communication system or something, an intercom system or something like that? Or is everything just wireless and you detach it if you needed to and it doesn't need to be considered? I just want to understand what, if there's anything that we should be considering as we look at this particular building?
I guess, you know, I could...
You're going to do it through the internet, correct? I mean, anything...
Yeah, I mean, we weren't, we weren't thinking of a hardwired system, again, because our, our, our support systems are so individualized. You know, each person is so unique and their needs are so unique. When we have, when we have an ongoing issue that needs, that we need some kind of resolution to, what we do is we bring a team of people together. Some of these are social workers, some of these are behavior specialists, some of these are technology people. We say, "Okay, how can we solve this problem?" Or "How can we give this person the tools that they need to get their needs met?" And sometimes that is technology.
Okay.
You know, sometimes it's a cellphone, sometimes it's an intercom system. And again, we, we aren't using any right now, but we are looking at the possibility of other kinds of remote systems for monitoring or communicating with people, just like a lot of doctors' offices are using telemedicine now.
Right.
And, and we're looking at those kinds of options as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
But nothing that you think would, we would need to account for within a site planner, within looking at the building or anything like that?
Not that I can think of. I mean, obviously, it's going to have sprinklers and, and, you know, smoke detection systems and, and, you know, floodlights and all, all of those things.
Okay.
We haven't come across anything yet that would require us to put some kind of standard mechanism in place to, to deal with crisis situations.
I, I think one of the things that would be, would be helpful, at least for, for me, is if you have a typical, and, and I certainly wouldn't want to see anyone's specific information, but like a typical crisis response-type plan or something.
Sure.
Just, just to give us a feel for, well, if somebody was having a situation that needed immediate attention and no one happened to be on site, you know, what, what is the protocol that we would follow for that?
Yeah.
And just understand, because, you know, I thought the suggestion of possibly working with our, with our local fire department and things like that, that may be appropriate.
Absolutely.
So if we want to talk about something like that, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we would have done, we're going to do that already, we just haven't gotten that far in the planning yet.
Okay.
But we can provide some redacted, names-redacted contingency plans, safety contingency plans and ISPs. We actually go so far as, you know, for...
Even if it's very generic, I mean, it doesn't need to be a specific, I'm just, you know, like, here's a typical thing that we would use as a crisis response or that sort of thing.
Yeah, I was, we even go so far as to say, "Okay, what is, for a person that doesn't have staff on overnight, what do they do if they have a headache in the middle of the night and they, you know, and they can't administer their own medications, you know? How, how do they get that done? Who do they call?"
Okay.
So everything from the highest level of crisis down to the, the most minor level of crisis.
And do you find, and you said you're working with 30 or 40 folks right now, are, do you, do you find that they help each other as well? Is there anything like that or is it primarily working with your staff?
Well, some of the sites that I'm talking about are group homes that are staffed less than 24 hours, so they have peers. And that does happen. They do tend to get to know each other very well and, and their needs and help each other. Some are situations where somebody has their own apartment and they're living there without staffing supports and a rent subsidy. And in a couple of situations, we have people who own their own condominium. And so there aren't peers.
Okay.
Peers around, but, but they do. And, and a lot of the folks that, we don't have a complete list right now, but a lot of the folks that would be living in this community are going to know each other and may, maybe have known each other for many years. Because we, within Abilities First, we have, we have our own little, little cosmos, our own little community. And, you know, summer picnics and Christmas parties, these people have been attending together for 10, 20, 30 years, some of them.
Okay.
So I think it's part of the reason we think this will work out very, very well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any, any final questions from board members? And again, members of the public? Okay. I guess Ken or Jeff, we need to adjourn the meeting to another date. We've got a couple of things that we need to follow up on and specifically your ARB approval and if we need to advertise for the fill permit. We need to make sure we're...
And what are the meeting dates for May?
Five and 19.
The, the May 5th meeting, I don't think you'd have enough time to advertise for, but the May 19th meeting is open right now and then the first meeting in June is June